All right, this is the planning board meeting of December 4th, 2012 at 7:00. We're downstairs tonight. This is meeting room 4. It is, it is, okay, so that's right. All right, so we'll, if we could please stand to... ...the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, under new business this evening, we have receipt of plans for a special permit, CBS, exceed signed dimensions.
Yes, they, they're gonna have a health clinic there. It's called the Minute Clinic. You've probably seen it on TV. Well, they want to institute that there, or they may have already, but they want to have signs. And they are well exceeding the number assigned. The size might be, no, they are exceeding the size. They want 20 square feet. So it's gonna require a special permit. So I would like to set up a public hearing for that. Well, I have it later in the agenda, so I'm gonna suggest January 15th and 7:15. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for CBS for January 15th, 15th at 7:15.
Second.
2012.
Can we have a motion and second? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So that is scheduled. Yeah, we're not gonna go through this.
No, that's, what I was gonna do is keep that in your packet, and then next time you'll still be there.
Okay.
In case you want to look at it.
All right. We'll go to the next item of business is the receipt of plans for Rocky Meadow Development Corporation. It's Form A.
This is the continuing... This is the continuing, I have more plans on this property than on the B property. I think you're setting the record, but this is a Form A, so for receipt of plans. You also have it in a small version in your packet. I know I emailed it to you. You happen to have the engineer here, because he's on the next item on the agenda if you had any questions. But usually you wait until the second meeting, 2D meeting, and he knows that.
Okay, we can, so we should schedule this for...
Yeah, it's just, it's not a hearing. You're gonna table this till we meet. And if you have any questions, send them to me, and I'll set them to this. I know I have one already. I have lot 1, 07B, has no frontage, and so that's gonna be an issue. Everything else, so far I'm okay.
And this is the parcel land that the solar panel project is...
Solar panels, subdivision, A, B, C.
So we have three different things going at the same time.
Something like four, maybe.
Three, I guess. For now, three.
Yeah. It's not a hearing, so I'll just put it on the 18th agenda.
All right.
I'll email Rich with any questions you have, but that's the one question I have is that we have a lot here without any questions.
All right, so the last item for new business is a Form B for Sunshine Preserve on Purchase Street.
This is a Form B. There's no public hearing. We presented this, or received this to the board a couple weeks, a month ago. And we have had our technical review committee meeting. We had it last week. And in your packet, you will see the comments from the different departments. And then I was hoping I could go through these, and maybe Rich could describe the project and respond to most of, not all, the comments. How's that sound? Maybe it'd be better if Rich presented the plans.
Yeah.
You have the paper. These are the plans that you're gonna share.
I don't know if that mic's working or not. Is this, is this mic working? Okay, so.
Let him share those. There's a Form B. Oh, yeah. He'll share. Let me share it.
Okay, so the record, my name is Richard Rayong. I'm with Prime Engineering. We prepared the plans. This is the parcel land. There's discussions. It goes over the the ridge hill drive. And a proposal is basically come through existing lot, great metal, this is great metal drive on the way. Just come in, shot cul-de-sac, create these two building posses, and then the balance of the land would not necessarily have blowings on it. We have a drain. We'll make a retention basin that would be large enough to hold an entire 100-foot storm and infiltrate in the ground. So there would be no increase in runoff, no increase in deep grade runoff. And we will put in some proprietary treatment for the stormwater over here, so that it's treated before it gets infiltrated. We've shown the wells here and here in 100-foot radius. We show where we can have septic systems over 100 feet away. These little rectangles here are the full zone. So it shows how we can fit the system, the water supply, and the dwelling all in the lot, meeting all zoning standards.
Now, sir.
Do you want me to go through the actual comments?
I think I'll go through them, and then maybe you can generally respond to them. Just a reminder, especially for Kevin, a Form B, again, no public hearing. It's really, Form Bs were established in the '50s probably to kind of have these informal discussions to flush out some of the issues, so that the owner didn't spend a lot of money on engineering until he got some comments back from the board, the town officials, and others. So that's the genesis of what a Form B is. And so we distributed these plans to the town engineer and to the departments. And I'll walk you through these very quickly. Fire department, you're gonna require on the definitive to show fire protection, distribution system, water system. He's gonna need to expand the cul-de-sac to 24 feet. Any driveway of 75 feet in length is gonna require an all-weather surface. I'm not even sure if there are any there. And add all driveways filed to one residential home or condominium, but that doesn't apply here. He wants a 30-foot fire protection buffer between dwelling and ground. And that is it for the chief.
And we can coordinate all of those.
Yeah, maybe that would best way to do that. Board of Health, he has not perked yet either lot. The advocate is provide us plan that conceptually shows the location of the buildings, sewage systems, and wells. Confirm that both lots shown meet Title V as well as all supplemental rules and regulations of the court of law. Lot 3 has no conceptual dwelling, and we did talk about that. Does have frontage, and possibly he could get a building lot in there. He's just not showing one. It's really up to him and the building department. If you recall, and I don't have a little laser pointer, but where that access is off the great metal, there's an existing dwelling. He'll obviously have to get a building permit demolition and to decommission the septic gas and all the other utilities. Any stormwater management, he has to go through both the Board of Health rules and regs for stormwater management and runoff. And he'll have to have complete designs by the civil engineer, clear standard stuff. My memo, and I see he's already submitted some, there's some stuff that's missing, a flood zone map, natural heritage map, I see that here. The narrative I didn't see, that's in there. The question about waivers, and I think, at least when you left, you didn't think you needed any. You were gonna go back and check.
Right, I don't believe we'll need any waivers.
Okay. We're gonna need an easement on that drainage retention pond, whatever it is, so that if and when this is built, the town has access to it and rights to it. And then the water line, which the chief had mentioned. Most of the things that Fussel O'Neill brought up, we've already talked about, the road list, the radii, stormwater management, fire protection. Oh, he did want, oh, she, actually it was Leslie that did this, wanted to make sure there was adequate site distance at the entrance, right? I think part of it is. So that was that. And then conservation was her typical, the drainage is done with Cornell Atlas, that there's no work within 100 feet. We'll have to go in front of them. 65 feet will require a notice. We also had a discussion in, for number, excuse me, five, about low-impact design. We're trying to treat the water in a natural way as opposed to a man-made way. Do you want to talk about that a little, Rich?
Yes, we, it's our intention to put in a structural component, and then have that discharged to natural vegetation, where we'll check dams, probably have rain gardens for the homes where the roof water would be collected and infiltrated into ground and runoff from the driveways would be brought to a rain garden where it would be treated by the vegetation and then infiltrated into the ground. So everything would be infiltrated, but we'll incorporate landscape elements to treat it.
And then her last two comments is that we don't use invasive species on plantings. We'll have to have a planting plan. And then the question about whether the Water Resource Protection statute is enacted, and that we're gonna do some calculations. In other words, if the road meets, I think it's 10,000 square feet or more, a special permit will be needed from the planning board along with the definitive subdivision.
And you hold that hearing...
Side by side, yes. That's all, you know, these are pretty preliminary, and I don't even want to ask if I'm gonna see a definitive plan, but we have seven months, I believe, to, he has seven months to submit a definitive plan, and then he's still active with this subdivision. We've been through these a little bit. We haven't had many subdivisions lately.
I don't think we've gotten, you know, we haven't done a preliminary. None that I can remember.
Yeah.
Everybody posted, and then even when I was in the business, everybody went to the, they skipped the preliminary.
Yeah, they were. A lot of people do that. If it's not industrial, you don't have to.
But I see no problem with that. So this is the fourth option. All right, so.
So traditionally, the planning board doesn't take action. They just convey the comments to us, and we now know when we're going to the definitive stage, which elements we have to incorporate in the planning board.
Yeah, I don't encourage you to go on record on anything. We never do, and they don't expect it.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're in board number 10.
I'm outside. Change property to different plans, and we also be, I don't know if we were here for the minor modification on the solar project. That's still, so you have three things outstanding.
All right, we can go on to old business. It's 7:20, so the meeting was scheduled for 7:15, public hearing for the proposed solar bylaw.
In your packet, I know we delayed this purposely, just so I could get an advertisement to the state and to Serpette. Nothing's, well, in your packet, you'll see a bylaw.
Eric, we'll just show them.
In your packet, you'll see a bylaw, which is exactly what's in town meeting except for the highlights in red. And these are just technical highlights recommended by town council. I don't even know if I have to go through them. They're pretty simplistic. I think there's four technically. One is some language to introduce it properly. I don't have it in front of me. The second is the number six instead of five regarding overlay. The third is the letter, the word "and". And the fourth is language he wanted at the end to refer it to the map. So those are the four things town council wanted. I didn't think they were big deals at all. Also in your packet is an email I received, and I alone sent it to the solar bylaw committee and not the planning board. It was scrutinized. But anyway, Mr. Bourne, the chairman of the Board of Health is here, and he wanted to suggest an amendment to the bylaw. So you have some technical amendments by town council, and then maybe Mr. Bourne can talk about this, and we'll can introduce any other things you have.
Did you want to go over the, what's been changed of the...
I think I just did, didn't I?
Okay.
Just...
They're small.
We're just legalese, really.
Right, okay.
Introduce it.
So if everybody's...
And I got those this afternoon, so.
Set, if everybody's set with that, we'll talk to Mr. Bourne.
These are, they have it in their packet. I sent that to you too, Eric, and Kevin as well.
I don't have it in my packet, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Shouldn't rely on me to do the co-later, I'm telling you right now.
I did read it in the center.
I did.
I'm over the High Ford and Tunnel Main Street. I'm not here on behalf of the Board of Health in my capacity as chairman. I'm here as a resident, but also as the resident Lancer there, with a couple of technical suggestions, not related so much to the way of proposing to put the panels and what you're proposing doing, but more technical as far as a couple things I think you need to add to cover mass general law. The first one being on your plans, it's fine to be certified by an engineer, but anything property line-wise, boundary-wise falls under the privilege of a registered Lancer there. 250 CMR, section 6, this procedural and technical standards that surveys and engineers work under. Boundaries, once you put a structural plan, like go an offset to that boundary line, that's not something an engineer is entitled to certify to, nor can certify to. That's the privilege of a registered Lancer there. Same with your buffer zones. Your buffer zones are gonna be relative to property lines. So that type of information, I feel, requires a certification of a Lancer there on the plan also. So that was number one. Number two, more important on the land clearing aspect of it, I felt what you had for, whether the law was approved for construction, that also, I feel, needs to be clearly surveyed and marked on the ground prior to anybody cut the twig. In the course of serving lots around town here, I have found a few cases where not so much planning board action, but some issues that really bother, go to the gravel removal board, where those operations have infringed and encroached 20 to 30 feet onto residential properties. Pretty significant. Cut gravel's been taken out, stumps have been put in, salt's been replaced, and, you know, so the gravel owner obviously can get as much gravel as he possibly can, make it his pond or his bogs or whatever. This, what I'm proposing is something that typically I see more with the conservation commissions, where once something's approved, the limit of work has to be staked in the ground, so they can put the hay bills and the siltation fence in. Once that's installed, the surveyor now has to come back and certify to the commission in writing that it's where it was supposed to be. There's no point in you folks sitting here reviewing plans and, you know, agreeing on buffer zones and limits of work and things of that nature, and then allowing people involved just willy-nilly, without any controls, cutting, clearing. Once the buffer's gone, it's not, you can't replace the natural buffer. You can do fencing, you can do plantings, but that natural buffer, which is what you're trying to do, is gone. So, and I think what I've added is wording here that, you know, not trying to drum a board for survey, all I'm trying to do is protect the dividing property owners from any encroachment by, you know, contractors that, you know, they might have good intentions, they might not, but if there's nothing clearly, if there's no visual barrier for them, they're gonna keep going. And if you think about, I told Jack this afternoon, if you've ever seen a logging truck as it leaves a piece of property when it's been working, you ever see it half-empty or half-full? No, because there's always another tree, another tree that they can cut and add to the pile. And the next thing you know, your 50-foot buffer is a 20-foot buffer, or it's no buffer, or it's onto your buddy block. I think it would add a little bit of teeth to the thing. If you're trying to set up buffer zones to allow these panels to go in, that's fine, but the buffers need to be clearly established.
Mr. Chairman, through you, do you have something in writing that you're gonna present at town meeting, or is it something that we need to, because we can't change now, it's already been printed, right?
That's correct.
So it has to be added at...
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
And you could agree to this and approve it and do it yourself, unless Mr. Bourne to do it. It doesn't matter. I think he'd like to know whether you like the idea.
My personal opinion, and, you know, three of the other subcommittee members are here. I think we worked hard at buffering and trying to define that and make sure that we had enough language in there to protect buffering and the natural vegetation and stuff prior to any large amount of ground soil. I don't see a problem with anything else presented to us. I think, on my, my point, I thought with the engineering, I uncovered that, to be honest with you. What you're telling me it doesn't, there's an extreme misconception by a lot of people. We, myself included, we present plans to this board, we spend a lot of time, we work out everything. We think we got a good project going out the door. We don't necessarily go with the project. That's the problem.
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
We talked about that.
More and more, we're getting bumped aside by contractors, and they got more expensive GPS equipment. They want to do all their own layout work. There's no registered supervision whatsoever by those people. And that's what you're losing. You're getting, my whole part of the trade coming in here and working with you folks, and like I said, we all agree, everybody's happy with the project. It goes up either, they may just sell the project, but a lot of people think that, well, because we're the engineers, we're advantaged, we go with the project, we have oversight of the construction and layout. Doesn't happen, unless there's a way of writing us into an approval, which there is a town that does have a, I think it's called Amendment A, that actually writes the design engineer into a, like a covenant, where, okay, now we have a little bit of teeth, we have a little bit of oversight, but, you know, I think.
I don't think I have a problem at all with that. I think it's just another, another check that we need with this. This is such an important bylaw. I don't, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't fully endorse what he's recommending, and either have Art bring it, or we can bring it, or the subcommittee can bring it up as an amendment on the floor. But I think that this board should fully endorse what he's suggesting. It's just another checks and balances, as far as I'm concerned. That's my opinion.
Anybody else have anything to...
I agree. Well, it's a good idea.
Yeah, I go along with this. This kind of guarantees that what's on the plan is gonna happen on the ground. And then I can understand why, you know, this is a good thing to do.
Do you have that in writing that we can have?
Yeah, I have it.
I'm gonna recommend, if you're gonna approve, if you're gonna approve the bylaw, and if you're gonna approve town council's amendments, and if you're gonna approve these, might as well through law, I can incorporate them into a document, highlight them in red, and have them ready for town meeting. And that way, town meeting can just do one fell swoop instead of us getting up there, you getting up there, I'm told there may be a selectman who wants an amendment to this. I haven't seen it, I'm told that. But that's not, that's not here. I'd be curious of what the subcommittee thinks.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, why is in the professional survey involved, and in the professional engineer is not involved?
Well, no, all I do with, in the italics, is what's in the bylaw, what's written in the bylaw now. So what's bold would be, what would be added.
I'll just make it red. Everything has to be Times Roman 12, so I'll just make it red.
Just have one question on this. The second part, I...
Your name?
Eric Tavaskey. Agree with you on the second part. I have no objection at all of that. The first part, just have a question, and then hopefully you can clarify. The section that's in is for the submissions to the board before the project is built.
Right.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the layout is certified by an engineer, and then the surveyor would only certify it after it's staked down the field, right?
Well, no, the initial plans that are submitted to the planning board should bear bold seals on them, because under the technical standards that engineers and surveyors work under, engineers are not allowed to certify setbacks from structures to property lines, which is what you're gonna see on a site plan. They're gonna show where the panels are gonna go, and there should be distances to all the applicable property lines.
I thought when it was laid out initially, the engineer was certifying that, and the surveyor was certifying that it was laid out properly.
Engineers cannot certify structures to property lines. That's a survey's job.
I mean, that was the case for the stuff that's...
Even plans with boundary lines on them and setbacks to property lines should bear the seal of a surveyor, which in some instances indicates that there's been some actual ground survey done by the surveyor.
That answer your question, Eric?
Yeah, I just unclear on where the survey came in.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to the other subcommittee members, if they have any comments on this, and address them if they...
Do you want to see it, Kevin?
I actually got the emails, so I've had a chance to review it. I'm good with, with that. Kevin Tracy, what's the main point to do? I'm good with, at the suggestions, you know, it was not necessarily something that a layperson might understand, that there's really a difference between engineering and surveying. So I'm good with that, is my language, and I think it strengthens the bylaw, if anything. And that's, that's what we need.
You got anything?
Yeah. Jim Downe, Deputy Mayor Main Street, Special Subcommittee of the Solar Bylaw. I think this is a good idea. What I'd like to see is specifications that require the stakes to be put in at intervals, underfoot intervals, so on, whatever, to make, that show the line, it's a bad line, so on, so forth. And because, once you do get out in the woods, these lines can get escorted. So if the stakes are not in there, it will be very hard to know exactly where they are. And this is, I think, more what happens, rather than deliberate use, although I know there are certain landowners here who have this problem with knowing where to stop. And one of them working next to my house, and I had 15 feet of chips piled up in my yard from the neighbors. Anyway, it just, it is a good idea to have. It will add a little bit to the experience, but it will also also ensure that the neighbors should be more enthusiastic, or at least less violent in their resistance.
Thanks.
That's it.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, would you like to take an entertaining vote to endorse the amendment, kind of show support from the planning board for this amendment?
If I may be so bold, maybe you want to close the hearing. You can close it now.
I think everybody's spoken that... I think everybody's spoken that-
They can do their thing.
All right, make a motion to close, Popkin.
You have a motion, second? Those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, okay, so we'll go on. So we have to-
I'd like to make a motion to endorse the Sola bylaw, including the amendment that we just heard from Anton House's amendments, to present it.
Are we taking a vote on that?
And also the bylaw, and the amendments that were recommended by town council.
Is that a question?
Okay. I just made a motion.
You might want to get to the second, so you can have the-
Second.
Okay, discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chair of the Sola.
Yep.
Why is the overlay not being allowed and not have the purple on the map?
The, what you see on the map that's outlined in purple was a consensus of a unanimous decision by the Sola Bylaw Committee to allow it in those areas. When we looked pretty in-depth on a lot of the properties, if not all of them, throughout the whole town, and if you implement the actual legislative setbacks and stuff like that, that we looked at, each parcel that might be able to use the bylaw, parcels get pretty small. And the, and the areas that are, that are not included in North Carver, in that area that's not in purple, is mostly, is highly dense in population, residential population. When we looked at the survey results that we received from the survey that was done, it was very clear that nobody in the town wanted, very strong encouragement to keep it out of residential area. As you see in that area, that's pretty dense with housing that have, now, other parcels up in that area that could utilize the bylaw, yes. But this is what we came up with, unanimous, I'll say again, as a map to allow for overlay district is a perfect though.
The North Carver dump is up there. So we're not even going to be able to utilize the dump for, with that overlay. By muddy pond there, there's the dump, and there are a lot of people that-
I know.
A large landowner's up there. I just don't think it's fair and equitable. I, personally, myself, I think that the should, the whole town should be by special permit.
And we had that discussion-
And where in town should be by-
We had that discussion, pretty, pretty in-depth discussion, from day one all the way through. And this is more of a in-depth look at all the properties. Like I said again, and I'll say over and over, is the overlay district outlined perfect? No. Is it a great starting point? Yes. It's, in my opinion, an exceptional starting point. Other properties in North Carver that could utilize the bylaw, being left out, yeah.
I mean, by not mentioning names, I don't think that I should, there are a lot of large landowners. I would rather see them go with Sola than to go with tax-negative single-family homes.
I agree with you. I agree. Did I help at all? I know it's not what you really want to hear, but-
No, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair and equitable.
You're not the only one that's brought that up. I think to a lot of us on the bylaw committee, and that's worked on this extremely hard, as you guys know. We've heard this back and forth so many times, how come not my property? How come you're allowing it on my property? I want it. There's both sides of that, that scope. We looked at where, where we would be able to implement it the best, the guidelines that we put in place with the buffer and everything, where have the least impact to the residents, existing residential, and also future residents, residents that are going to be there. This is what we came up with. I don't know any other way to candy coat it before you or anybody else out there.
No, I just think that the whole town should be done by special permits.
And I appreciate that, and I know the subcommittee does too.
Thank you.
All right, so, let me see, we vote, we, oh, we close the hearing?
Yeah, there's a motion on the table to endorse.
Endorse? Okay, the Sola bylaw and the amendments made by the ways and by, okay. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so those in favor to endorse, say aye.
Aye.
No.
So that was three to one. Okay.
Okay. Now, the other thing that I got to mention is that town meeting's on Thursday night. As you guys know, that I was the chairman of the Sola Bylaw Committee. I have an obligation, I have to be in the town of Dennis on Thursday night. I will not be making town meeting. I don't know which one of you guys are going to be there. It's a planning board article, it needs to be presented by the planning board members. After that point, when it becomes to discussion, I would feel confident in any one of the members of the subcommittee to speak for it. Our vice chairman of the subcommittee was Mr. O'Brien. If he would be willing to speak on our behalf, I would highly encourage that. If Mr. O'Brien can't make it, Mr. Tabalski, if he can't make it, you know, Mr. Tracy, Mr. Dowell, any one of us have worked extremely hard on this. Everybody's fully aware and can sponsor this thing with their eyes closed. I don't know which members can make town meeting. It's on a Thursday, it's kind of difficult for us to kind of do that. I'm just letting you know that I will not be here. There's just no way. I have a conflict, and there's just no way I'm going to be here.
I just gonna, I did an informal poll, and I don't know if any of you are going to be there.
I think Jack should still-
I know Rosemarie and Will can't make it, and Chad doesn't look good.
I'm working on the babysitter.
And Bruce is on call.
I, I'll see what I can do, I, I can be there to-
I think what we'll say, though, is all you need is if one of you are there, to just make the motion to approve as amended, and then perhaps one of these guys can talk about the details.
I think I can trade off a few hours, so that I can be there till 10:00. And let me see what I can, we'll figure it out.
And we'll work on, you know, getting somebody to actually speak for it. You know, I know that none, nobody here would hesitate to jump at the bite just to represent it. It's such a good article, and it's been months and months of worked on it. It sets everything in place. These guys would be more than happy to do that, so. I just want you guys to know, if you're amendable to that, that would be great. If not, we'll leave it on Jack's shoulders. He's the planner, so we'll make him do it.
We had that discussion.
Yeah, I know, but that's okay.
I think we could work something on it. I think we could work something on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on. Okay, so we finished the old business. So we'll go to other business, planning board notes. Do the planning board member have anything they'd like to speak about this evening?
The only thing I got is I've got to express pure appreciation for everybody on the bylaw committee that worked on this. I do appreciate the citizens that participated in the survey. Survey helped us quite a bit, and other citizens that just came in and just worked with us from, you know, one meeting to another meeting. This was a tough thing for us to handle, and I just want to say thank you to everybody that really worked hard on this. And I thank the planning board for all your input, and hopefully we'll be able to sound on Thursday night. That's all I got.
All right, moving on to planners' notes.
I'll be brief. If you haven't noticed, Duncan Donuts just started construction over on, from the Silo Market. I had a meeting today for a prospective company, more focused power. They're looking at the parcel next to where Keller's Landscaping is going in. And it was an interesting meeting, because they want to build a 14,000-square-foot building with a showroom and a service area with days, and they sell tractors and all kinds of equipment, and they service the equipment. It's a nice use, nice location, good tax dollars, and job. The problem running into is that there's a bylaw, it's a statute, that anything over 7,500 square feet has to have sprinklers. And not only do we not have public water down there, they have to do it through a well and a cistern, and it's cost prohibitive. So, we had a very good meeting with the fire department, and the building commissioner, and their engineers, trying to come up with a creative way to, I don't think work around it is the right word, but just to meet the law that can have public safety but allow that to happen. So hopefully, we're going to come to some agreement on that. We're close. The owner's going to have to make a few concessions on how the whole thing is structured. We're thinking of two buildings with a adjoining walkway, and that way it meets the code, and it still serves, serves the purpose. We'll see. Also, we're getting a little movement. I know that Karma Realty, which is a company out of a costly Silo, looks like there's some movement there. I expect to be meeting with them very soon on some development proposals they have. They've entered into a purchase and sale, and they have, well, now they have 11 months to get a building permit. I have not seen the plan, I don't know what to tell you, other than rumors, and they're not going to serve us well here. My last thing is also to thank Darlene, she's saving my life by coming tonight. As you know, Kim is gone. I wish I had a very clear path on what we're going to do, the normal thing, would I advertise and we interview and hire someone. But the town administrator, who is the appointing authority, is looking at possible some consolidation in our area and reorganization. He's not sure if he can do it legally, by union rights, and if it's the right thing at all. In the interim, Darlene has agreed, and only in the interim, to cover the planning board minutes. Also, Kim has agreed to come in, and this has nothing to do with the planning board, come in on Thursdays and take care of the water departments, because they pay her five hours a week, or did pay her. Still leaves me short. And if you look at the agenda, I see there's two G's there. If you look at the packet, they're not the way they should be, so, you know, this is just the first day, the second day, the first day she's not here. So, I just, that's all I can tell you, to know what's going on. So, that's it.
All right, so we have the approval of the minutes, we have two meetings. We have November 7th, 2012, and November 20th, 2012. It's under item F.
Make a motion to approve November 7th, 2012.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move on to the next. November 20th?
Can I make a motion to approve his run?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Correspondents.
Two things. One is you'll see a Buzzard Bay Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan update. Maybe pull that out, take it home for your midnight reading. I hope you do that. But most importantly, not most importantly, but also after that, you'll see a letter from Stone Cranberry Corp.
Jeff, where are we still at Buzzard Bay?
I don't know, here.
Gee.
I told you, I did it.
He might have things missing, yeah.
Thank you.
I want to refer you to a letter from Stone Cranberry, which should be right in the back of that.
I can see that.
I did these, and they're probably a mess, but I apologize.
Stone Cranberry Corp.
Yes. Do you find that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you.
You know, he's complaining about some, what he's alleged zoning violations regarding Clap LLC. Now, that's where the old Sampson lumber is, right at the Plymouth, I mean, the Middleborough border on Plymouth Street, right at the border, opposite the Ravenbrook Dome. And there's two businesses there. One is, the guy runs a garbage business, and he has, he doesn't bring the garbage there, but he has his trucks there. Second one is Eric Mueller for Southeast Sept. He's claiming a septic transfer station. I cleared that with the Board of Health and DEP. He is not in violation. And there's some details on what makes a transfer station and what isn't. He does not qualify or fall under that category. And then he's saying that it's a trash compactor trucking operation. It is, but there's no trash there, and a container storage area. It is. I also put in your packet, that's zoned on industrial contractor's yard, and if you look under the definitions of a contractor's yard, it certainly seems to me that he falls under the category. So, this is a zoning complaint. This was given to the selectmen, and, you know, technically it should go to the building commissioner, not the planning board. And the plant, the building commissioner gives a view, that's the way it should be. So, I don't know if you want to talk about this, you want me to pursue this. My next step would be to go to the town administration and say, you know, let the building commissioner deal with this. You do have one, he only works a couple hours a week, but he is here. That's, I didn't know, I thought you should see that. I don't know if you have any comments or concerns.
I think the building commissioner probably should take a look at this, see if there are any problems, and we can talk about it.
I agree.
Thank you.
I will send it along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
All right. I think it's the next schedule is German.
Oh, oh, wait. Good, I made it. The January schedule, your normal meeting date is January 1st. That's why I asked for that hearing, to go to January 15th. I would like, obviously we have one on the 15th. I'd like to hold the 29th, which is the fifth Tuesday, out there in case it's needed. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I think it's a good idea, especially where you're going to be getting into-
The town meeting and stuff.
Town meeting junk, articles. That's a good idea.
I may need it, may not. So, that's all it is. We'll have it on the 15th definitely, 29th up in the air.
Okay. All right, and your next meeting is the 18th?
Second.
All in favor for adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Thank you.
Please take that off.